Meeting to order. We'll start by taking role. Commissioner Daley is our reminder, your city, county, and state.
Right. Bill Daley, Mount Pleasant, Isabella, Michigan.
Commissioner Friedrich.
Here, Mount Pleasant, Isabella, Michigan.
Commissioner Honig.
Here, City of Mount Pleasant, County of Isabella, State of Michigan.
Commissioner Irwin.
City of Mount Pleasant, County of Isabella, State of Michigan.
Commissioner Kingsworthy.
Yep, here, City of Mount Pleasant, County of Isabella, Michigan is the state.
Commissioner Kostrova.
Here, Mount Pleasant, Isabella, Michigan.
Commissioner Leish.
On Monaco, Nida County, Wisconsin.
And I will have to ask you for spelling after the meeting. Commissioner Orman.
Here, Mount Pleasant, Isabella, Michigan.
And Commissioner Rice.
I'm here in the city of Mount Pleasant, Isabella County, State of Michigan.
Thank you. Alright, folks, our first item of business tonight is elections, which occur every February according to the Planning Commission bylaws. I provided an overview of the election process in your packet, but just a few quick reminders. Nominations don't require a motion or a second. You can nominate anyone, including yourself, for the office of chair, and then we'll do nominations for vice chair. Basically, you would just say, "I nominate this commissioner for the office of chair or vice chair." Once we have all the nominations on the floor, we'll do an open vote. I'm gonna look for a show of hands. Well, actually, we're gonna do a roll call vote tonight, so that won't matter, so that we know everyone's accounted for. And the first person to achieve a majority, which would be five votes, would be elected to that position, and then we'll go to the next position. And I will hand things over to the chairperson at that time. So with that, do we have any nominations for Planning Commission chairperson?
I nominate. I nominate. Well, go ahead, Bill.
I did. Honig for chair, please.
Alright, do we have any other nominations for chair? Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Daley.
Aye.
Commissioner Friedrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Honig.
Aye.
Commissioner Irwin.
Aye.
Commissioner Kingsworthy.
Aye.
Commissioner Kostrova.
Aye.
Commissioner Leish.
Aye.
Commissioner Orman.
Aye.
Commissioner Rice.
Aye.
Congratulations, Madam Chair, the gavel is yours.
Thank you. And now, let's take some nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Commissioner Christine Orman for the office of vice chair.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close nominations. Mr. Kane, will you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Daley.
Aye.
Commissioner Friedrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Honig.
Aye.
Commissioner Irwin.
Aye.
Commissioner Kingsworthy.
Aye.
Commissioner Kostrova.
Aye.
Commissioner Leish.
Aye.
Commissioner Orman.
Aye.
Commissioner Rice.
Aye.
Congratulations, Madam Vice Chair.
Congratulations. Okay, next, I am on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as it is presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Kane, will you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Daley.
Aye.
Commissioner Friedrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Honig.
Aye.
Commissioner Irwin.
Aye.
Commissioner Kingsworthy.
Aye.
Commissioner Kostrova.
Aye.
Commissioner Leish.
Aye.
Commissioner Orman.
Aye.
Commissioner Rice.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. And next, I am on the agenda is approval of the January 7, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Kane, will you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Daley.
Aye.
Commissioner Friedrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Honig.
Aye.
Commissioner Irwin.
Aye.
Commissioner Kingsworthy.
Aye.
Commissioner Kostrova.
Aye.
Commissioner Leish.
Aye.
Commissioner Orman.
Aye.
Commissioner Rice.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, I am on the agenda is the zoning board of appeals report. Are we supposed to have a vote for the ZBA?
Somewhere in there.
It's under new business.
Okay, okay. So I didn't skip it, okay. Excuse me, Commissioner Friedrich.
Madam Chair, we did not meet.
Thank you. And next, I am on the agenda is communications. Mr. Kane?
Madam Chair, no communications this evening. I did wanna let everybody know, if you saw in your email today, I provided the DPW comments for our first case tonight. I apologize, we did not have those in time for the packet distribution last week, so we were writing those late. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that those were provided today.
Thank you. And next item on the agenda is public hearing, starting with SUP 2102 and SPR 2102. Mr. Kane?
Madam Chair, Nick, could you give me screen share abilities, please? Thank you. So our first item tonight is a public hearing for 1005 Douglas Street. This is a special use permit and site plan review request to construct a new three-unit rooming dwelling for a total of eight occupants on the site. The property is located in the CD4 general urban zoning district with a student organization dwelling and rooming dwelling restriction special requirement. The future land use is mixed-use medium. Current prior use, the property currently has a two-unit rooming dwelling on the site with a total of eight occupants residing there. Property owner is United Apartments RCS LLC, and the applicant is United Apartments. The site area is .19 acres. Property is located on the east side of Douglas Street. This is between Bellows and Clayton Streets. The principal land uses on the north, east, and south are rooming dwellings. To the immediate west is the university surplus parking lot. That property has a zoning district of SCU University with a future land use of campus. Otherwise, properties in the other three directions share a land use, future land use and zoning with the subject property. Picture on your screen will show you current conditions of the site. This is the existing dwelling in white on the property that is proposed for demolition to be replaced with the new three-unit rooming dwelling on the site. This improvement will include removal of that existing driveway. The parking that is proposed with this project will take its access off of the existing public alleyway along the rear. You'll note to the left, there's a project that was approved under the former MT redevelopment process in the late 2000s decade. To the right, you'll recall, in the past two years, the Planning Commission had approved the project at 1015 Douglas Street, also United Apartments, which was a demolition and reconstruction, similar to the proposal that's before you tonight. Picture you'll now see on your screen is a perspective of this property from the rear, from the alley side. As I mentioned, the applicant is proposing to add a parking lot at the rear that will provide eight parking spaces for the house and will take its only access from the alleyway, the public alleyway to the rear. The dwelling that exists on the site was constructed in 1940. The proposed new dwelling is two stories in height and has a total of 5,411 square feet of living space. The end units are 1,848 square feet, and those would have an occupancy of three people per unit. The center unit in the building is 1,680 square feet with a proposed occupancy of two. I'll note that this project, unlike some other recent projects we've done, is built on a slab foundation, so there's not any basement level footprint occupied or unoccupied with this project. Rooming dwellings like this are subject to a special use permit in the CD4 zoning district. There are four special use permit conditions that apply specifically to rooming dwellings in that zoning district, and this project is consistent with all four of those standards. On the screen, you'll see an overview of the proposed site plan. You can see just roughly the unit division lines. The proposed dwelling will have a front porch which faces Douglas Street with a sidewalk connection out to the existing public sidewalk. The applicant is proposing to install landscaping and streetscaping in accordance with the city zoning ordinance, which includes the two street trees along Douglas Street, as well as the screening landscaping between the parking lot, adjacent properties in the street. You'll note that the bicycle parking to meet city code is located at the rear, as are the air conditioning units for the dwelling units, as well as the trash containers for those dwelling units so that they can be moved or alley side for pickup. As I mentioned earlier, there are eight parking spaces proposed at the rear, one per occupant, which is obviously consistent with the city's specifications, since no parking would otherwise be required. Just run through that site plan real quickly. The site plan that was submitted does comply with all of the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. An updated site plan, which reflects the limited number of staff conditions tonight, should be submitted in order for us to issue final city approval. In terms of setbacks, the proposed project is consistent with the front, side, and rear setback requirements of the CD4 zoning district. I've noted those in the table on the screen, as well as in your staff report. This is slightly different than the last presentation of a rooming dwelling, so if anyone has any feedback on either the report or the presentation in terms of the presentation of standards, I would welcome it at any time. In terms of building standards, once again, the proposed building is consistent with all of the building standards for residential dwelling in the CD4 zoning district. Those are covered in detail in your staff report, as well as on the screen. But just as a quick overview, as I mentioned, it is a two-story dwelling with a total height of 32 feet. The main entrances per code are located in the Douglas Street, principal street frontage. The applicant is proposing a glazing which exceeds the minimum requirement of the district along that front facade, and the other project otherwise in terms of roof pitch, finished floor level, and other standards of the CD4 district. It meets or exceeds the minimum requirements of the district. In terms of encroachments, there is a six-foot open porch proposed, which encroaches in the front setback, which is permitted under the ordinance. All the other encroachments that we might experience, including the mechanical equipment and bicycle parking, as I mentioned, are located at the rear, and that is an area where they are permitted to encroach. Already covered the parking, there's eight hard surface parking spaces at the rear, which are consistent dimensionally with the standards of the zoning ordinance. And the applicant is proposing eight bicycle parking spaces, which are consistent with the ordinance. And they provided a specification for that parking, so there's no comment, no condition of approval associated with that tonight. In terms of other requirements, the trash containers, as I mentioned, are located in the third lot layer at the rear in the parking area, which is consistent with code. There are no private landscaping requirements here. The landscaping requirements that do exist are for the streetscaping and for the screening, and both of those have been met. The applicant is proposing voluntarily some non-code-required landscaping, which includes two trees and some shrubs in that front yard in front of the dwelling. And just to note that all site lighting, as with any project, has to conform with Section 96.13 of the Mount Pleasant City Code under nuisances, the city's lighting standards. I mentioned the screens when we reviewed the site plan. There is a requirement to provide evergreen screening of the parking area from the street and from adjacent properties. The proposed screening here is consistent with that standard. All that we need to finalize this site plan would be the details on the species and the size, the time of planting for those screens, as well as for the streetscape improvements, which are those two street trees that would be planted in the Douglas Street front. So with that, staff's recommendation tonight is to approve the special use permit and site plan review, subject to providing the specifications for that landscaping plan and complying with the requirements of public works and public safety. I know that we have Rick McGurk here from United Apartments to answer your questions. I spoke with Tim Beebe from Central Michigan Surveying Development earlier this evening, and he was making his way to Bay City in this weather. I wasn't sure he'd be on the call in time to join us, but between Rick and I, hopefully, we can address any questions from the Planning Commission. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Kane?
I just wanted to comment that I really liked the format that you used, where you showed the required code and then how this meets it in a table form, so thank you.
Mr. Kane, can you explain in our packet, we got the fire department inspection report, with every item listed as a fail, is this something we need to be concerned about or not? Because it's a tear down and...
Well, so we discussed this maybe two or three months ago, and it maybe was in a meeting you were present at. The fire department recently changed the software that they use to produce their site plan reports. The first time I saw one, I was alarmed, because everything was a fail, which, you know, when it's in red and it says fail, that's generally not a good thing. Essentially, most of the fire department requirements are addressed at the time of final inspection, and so all of those items are gonna be in a fail category until they've done that inspection and then they move to pass. So, long story short, the fire department has assured me that if there are major concerns with the plan, that the Planning Commission needs to know, they'll find a different way to highlight those. But generally speaking, you can just consider that just an indication that failure means that they're gonna have to meet that condition.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane?
Yes, I have a question regarding the landscaping and fencing, and then the pending plan for species. As to whether we, I know that it meets, we're meeting the specification here, but I wonder if we might be able to encourage, or I should say discourage, planting of invasive species, which even though there are small numbers, we still know that there are native species that are generally, you know, better for even our urban environments. But I apologize, I'm not exactly sure what that mechanism is for suggesting that or encouraging that, other than what I'm saying right now.
Well, that's a good question, and I'll jump in first, and then Rick, if you have anything you wanna add, by all means, feel free to jump in. I would just remind everyone on the Planning Commission, because we don't talk about this often, because fortunately, most folks are gonna hire a landscape contractor, and most landscape contractors don't wanna plant invasive species. But we do have a prohibited plant list at the city that any landscape planner is reviewed against, which is gonna include not just invasive species, but also species that are prone to structural failure. So, you know, tree species that might be likely to topple in a windstorm, or maybe grow too fast and don't get the good structure they need to survive. And also things that are just not suited to Michigan. It's a pretty long list, and it is on the city's website, so that's something you could check out. We do also encourage people informally to try to use species that are well-adapted to the climate, as well as to the purpose where they're being used. So we're often dealing with parking lot landscaping or street trees, both of which are living in a pretty harsh environment. By the nature of where they're located, they're gonna be exposed to salt, they're gonna be exposed to cars, and rowdy college students, in many cases. I'm sure Rick could expand on that. And so trying to find something that's gonna withstand that and thrive with a minimal amount of care. Also recognizing that we want things to be able to survive without an extensive amount of watering and pruning and other things. So we do have some safeguards in mind. What I would say, generally speaking, Commissioner Kingsworthy and for everyone's benefit, if there's something you wanna add as a condition of approval, what I would recommend is that you do that by making a motion and including that as a condition. If you're looking to just encourage someone, an applicant, to do that, this would be a great time to have that dialogue, to let the applicant know your interest in that, and then staff can continue to work with them to finalization of the project, to see that we do the best we can to meet that encouragement.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane? If the applicant would like to speak?
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you for your time tonight in reviewing our plan for 1005 South Douglas. And I think it's a great project, and if there's any additional questions or concerns I can help out with. In regards to the landscaping, we're gonna approach it, we use a professional landscaper, and we will follow those guidelines by the city of Mount Pleasant for all of the plant material.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, thank you. And I will open up public comment, if there's anyone from the public to comment.
Now, city, Madam Chair, in the comment inbox, we don't have any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. I will close public comment and open up discussion.
Move to approve SUP 2102 and SPR 2102, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant will provide a final landscaping plan with the species and size, the time of planting for all trees and shrubs. Two, comply with the requirements of public works and public safety.
I'll start it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kane, will you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Daley.
Aye.
Commissioner Friedrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Honig.
Aye.
Commissioner Irwin.
Aye.
Commissioner Kingsworthy.
Aye.
Commissioner Kostrova.
Aye.
Commissioner Leish.
Aye.
Commissioner Orman.
Aye.
Commissioner Rice.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, I am on the agenda is SUP 2103. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next item tonight is a request for a special use permit for a Class C adult-use marijuana grower at a location that's currently, has a special use permit for a Class C medical marijuana grower. The location is 210, 212 West Pickard. Property is zoned SCI industrial with no special requirements, has a future land use of industrial. As I mentioned, the request is for a Class C adult-use marijuana grower. The property owner is Stash Ventures LLC, and the applicant is Scott Morehead. Total size of this property is just shy of nine acres. The subject property is located on the north side of Pickard Street. This is just to the east of the Chippewa River and north of the city's post office. There is a mix of zoning and future land use in this area. Properties to the east, west, and north are primarily zoned industrial. There is a small portion of this property that abuts the charter township of Union and the city's boundary. Immediately to the north and east is the city's wastewater plant. To the south, the property is across the road from a portion of Pickens Field, as well as a property that's in the industrial zoning district. And then, as I mentioned, the United States Postal Service, which you all know is located at the corner of Main and Pickard, is also to the south. Photo on your screen is a current conditions of the cultivation building, and this is looking towards the north. You're all likely familiar, there's a smaller, commercial-style building located closer to Pickard Street. This is the largest building on-site, which is proposed to be used for cultivation. This is where the Planning Commission has previously approved Class C medical marijuana grower special use permit, and the applicant's proposing to co-locate a Class C adult-use marijuana grower in the same building. This is a perspective of that building from the rear, so this would be looking towards the south and east of that same building. You'll see, just since the last time this project was before the Planning Commission, there's been some pretty significant exterior progress on the construction of the project. I have not had a chance to be inside the building, but my understanding from my colleagues at the city and the building and fire departments is that there's been some pretty significant progress inside the building as well. Adult-use marijuana growers are subject to a special use permit in the SCI zoning district, and there are multiple special use permit criteria that apply to growers in that district. I would just note, in this case, the applicant is proposing to have a Class C adult-use marijuana license and to stack that license. City ordinance allows for up to three Class C licenses to be used in a facility together. Under the adult-use law, a Class C license allows you to have up to 2,000 plants. So stacking three licenses would allow for up to 6,000 adult-use marijuana plants in this facility. Currently, there's the approval for the medical marijuana Class C license. Each of those licenses allows up to 1,500 plants, for a total of 4,500 medical marijuana plants. So we'd be looking at just over 10,000 plants in total within the footprint of this building. Staff has included a copy of the site plan that was approved by the Planning Commission in 2020 for your review. The applicant's not proposing any changes to the site beyond what was already approved by the Planning Commission last year. Hours of operation remain the same under the proposed conditions, and none of the other buildings on-site at this time are proposed for marijuana use. The cultivation use is proposed for the interior of this building. Staff also included a copy of the applicant's proposed floor plan. There are some minor modifications to their floor plan to accommodate the addition of the adult-use grower within the facility. I know we have at least two people on the call tonight from Stash Ventures that are here to answer any specific questions you might have about the operation. And in the meantime, if there's any questions about the special use permit review, I'd be happy to answer those. Staff's recommendation is to approve the special use permit, subject to two conditions. One, that the applicant comply with the special use permit criteria for all adult-use marijuana establishments, as well as those that are specifically applied to growers. And two, that the applicant continue to comply with the conditions that were imposed in the approval of the previous special use permit and site plan review 2005 and 2006, respectively. Madam Chair, I'll turn things back over to you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Kane?
I have a question. I know that there were a limited number of licenses for the medical marijuana and/or the recreational marijuana. Does our approval in any way impact the ability of others to get or obtain those licenses?
Anybody who comes before the Planning Commission for marijuana special use permit is going to, sorry, just one second. Is gonna get a conditional authorization from the city first for their license before they come to the Planning Commission for a special use permit. And that conditional authorization is what really determines the license availability. Obtaining the special use permit becomes a contingency of keeping that conditional authorization. So failure to obtain a special use permit would result in the conditional authorization expiring, and then that license opportunity becoming available to another party. At this time, as of today, we do have all three of our medical marijuana Class C grower licenses allocated under conditional authorizations. Actually, one of those has a final authorization, and then we have two that are conditionally authorized. Under the adult-use program, we have one that has an existing conditional authorization that's already been before the Planning Commission, and then tonight's request, which also has conditional authorization. So we do have one Class C license opportunity that's still available to the next person who comes forward with an interest in it.
So this person is then, hence, this one building is taking up two licenses?
This building would have six licenses total. There's an opportunity to have up to three Class C facilities in medical marijuana, and up to three in adult-use marijuana. So yeah, there would be one opportunity remaining for a Class C facility under our current license caps.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane? Okay, if the applicant would like to speak?
Hi, this is Julie Morehead. I am co-owner, along with my husband, Scott, and I'm joining you tonight, along with Adrian Alvarez. Adrian is in Mount Pleasant, and he is handling all of the construction, so he can answer any questions that you may have about the property, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about our business.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Hi, is there any difference operationally between medical marijuana and the adult-use marijuana?
There is no difference, honestly. We try to take current good manufacturing practices into account for FDA standards. So everything will be, and also for the special use permit. So, you know, everything is aligned to be constructed as so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. I will open up public comment, if there is anyone... Thank you. I will open up public comment if there is anyone that wishes to speak.
Madam Chair, we don't have anything in our comment inbox this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. I will close public comment and open up discussion.
Move to approve SUP 2103, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall comply with all special use permit criteria for adult-use marijuana establishments, as well as the specific criteria applying to growers. Two, the applicant shall comply with the conditions imposed in the approval of special use permit 2005 and the site plan review 2006.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kane, will you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Honig?
Aye.
Commissioner Irwin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kingsworthy?
Aye.
Commissioner Castrova?
Aye.
Commissioner Leish?
Aye.
Commissioner Orman?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Stay.
Madam Chair, that motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. And next item on the agenda is TC 2101. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our final public hearing tonight is regarding a text change that was introduced to the Planning Commission in work session back in December and brought forward for public, to set the public hearing last month. You'll recall, the general intent of this ordinance is to relax the city's prohibition on ground-level residential units in certain areas, primarily the central core of downtown Mount Pleasant and South Mission Street. These are areas that historically ground-level residential units have not been permitted under the current code, as well as under past zoning codes of the city. This would establish a process by which, by special use permit, the Planning Commission could allow ground-level residential units if they meet certain standards. Those specific standards for this use are primarily, one, that the first 50 feet of depth of the ground level would be reserved for a non-residential use along the frontage. So basically maintaining a storefront or office-front street type along our main commercial corridors, and placing those residential units to the side or rear of that. And two, that those non-residential spaces that are kept along the frontage continue to have interior access to the rear of the building so that they can obtain their deliveries, waste management, and other access without necessarily utilizing the public frontage. Staff's recommendation tonight, after the public hearing, is that you recommend the ordinance forward to the city commission for approval.
I recommend the city commission adopt text change 210. Don't mean to bore you.
I'll just, yeah, we'll need to have the public hearing first.
Before we have the public hearing, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Kane? Okay, I will open up the public hearing, and if anyone from the public would like to speak.
Madam Chair, we have no communications in the comment inbox.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. I will close the public hearing, and if anyone, well, I guess Commissioner Daley, you were in the midst of making a motion, if you want to.
Oh, I was out of order, sorry. I do recommend that the city commission adopt text change 2101.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Kane, will you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Honig?
Aye.
Commissioner Irwin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kingsworthy?
Aye.
Commissioner Castrova?
Aye.
Commissioner Leish?
Aye.
Commissioner Orman?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. And next item on the agenda is public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wants to speak, now is your last opportunity to do so.
Madam Chair, we have no communications in the comment inbox.
Mr. Bebe is raising his hand. He'd like to speak.
I just would like to apologize for getting on late. I was trying to get across so that I wasn't driving home late in the storm and got caught in it anyway. So I apologize to the board for missing the, the meeting on my agenda item, and I know Jacob probably did a very good job for me. So if there is any questions or comments that you might still have, I'd be happy to answer.
I'm glad you got home safe, Bebe.
Thank you.
I'll just remind Mr. Bebe that the next time this happens, the staff recommendation could change to denial, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bebe. Glad you got home safe. And anyone else want to speak? Hearing no, and I'll close public comment and move to the next item on the agenda, which is under new business. Recommend a Planning Commission representative in the zoning board of appeals.
Madam Chair, every year, the Planning Commission in February makes a recommendation to the city commission on an appointment for our crossover member to the zoning board of appeals. For the last seven years, Commissioner Friedrich has served in that capacity. And so, as with our earlier elections, looking for a nomination, ultimately, this nomination is a recommendation that'll have to be confirmed by the city commission at a future meeting.
Nominate Commissioner Friedrich, if he'll accept another appointment.
I will.
Okay, any other nominations? I will close nominations, and Mr. Kane, will you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Honig?
Aye.
Commissioner Irwin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kingsworthy?
Aye.
Commissioner Castrova?
Aye.
Commissioner Leish?
Aye.
Commissioner Orman?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Cory.
And next item on the agenda is joint meeting with the city commission.
Madam Chair, every year, the Planning Commission traditionally meets in joint session with the city commission to talk about the planning question to end our report and any other pertinent topics of interest, including the work plan for the year. We unfortunately ended up canceling our 2020 joint meeting due to COVID-19. We held off in hopes that we would be back in person by June or July of 2020. And as you all know, that didn't happen. So we're looking to have a virtual Zoom meeting with the, or, I'm sorry, with the city commission before your March meeting, so starting at 6:00 PM on Thursday, March 4. So the city commission's already taken action to set their special meeting. We're just looking for you all to take action tonight to set that meeting as well. Clarification I would add is if a critical mass of you cannot be at the meeting at 6:00 o'clock, we should not set it. We should reschedule. But presuming most of you are able to make it, I would ask that you go ahead and set that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. I'll open up discussion.
The joint meeting with the city commission will be held electronically on Thursday, March 4, 2021, at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kane, will you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Honig?
Aye.
Commissioner Irwin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kingsworthy?
Aye.
Commissioner Castrova?
Aye.
Commissioner Leish?
Aye.
Commissioner Orman?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. And next item on the agenda is discuss and consider an extension of SUP 2002 and SPR 2002. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been a while since the Planning Commission's had a request for a site plan or special use permit extension. So in your packet, I provided an overview of both the background on this particular case, as well as what the ordinance says with regard to extensions of site plans and special use permits. It is within the Planning Commission's authority to issue up to a one-year extension of a site plan or special use permit approval. There's really not any criteria that the Planning Commission is required to consider with that extension request, other than if there's been any subsequent zoning ordinance changes that would render the approved plan or project in some manner non-conforming. So just as an example, if we'd adopted new landscaping standards and we had a plan before us that was inconsistent with those new standards, it would probably be appropriate to either condition the extension on a revision of the plan or to ask the applicant to come forward with a plan that was code-compliant as a new submit, all-new case. In this instance, back at your February 6, 2020, meeting, the Planning Commission approved a special use permit and site plan, which allowed an increase in occupancy at an existing room and dwelling from three to five at 1011 South Washington Street. And there were a number of conditions imposed by the Planning Commission at that time. Because those conditions haven't been met, and that, that, sorry, time tight, that approval expires tomorrow without actual by the Planning Commission tonight. So the applicant, in discussion with staff, is bringing this forward with a request of approval. And we'd like to say that since we began discussion of this extension, the applicant and her representative have been extremely prompt and diligent about meeting the conditions of approval. There are landscaping improvements and other site improvements that were part of that package of approval. And as you know, it is not, both not a great night, but not the right season to be planting new shrubs or trees. And so it really isn't possible for the totality of these conditions to be met in February. And so, staff, there's a persuasive case to be made for this extension. The applicant's asked for an extension through the end of May so that that planting activity can take place. The Planning Commission is within your discretion to provide an extension of up to one year. You can also not grant the extension. The applicant would have the option of coming back forward with a new application for consideration if you did not grant the extension tonight. But it is within the Planning Commission's ability to do that. We have both Ms. Pelletier, the property owner, as well as Kenny Howe here to represent the application and the extension request and to answer any questions from the Planning Commission in doing so. So I'll turn things back over to you, Madam Chair, for questions from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Any questions for Mr. Kane?
So Jacob, we haven't made any changes in the rules in the year.
Nothing that would adversely impact the approval as approved, Commissioner Daley.
And as a result of not doing this work, the occupancy apparently stays at three.
Well, actually, what would happen in this case is that with the special use permit expiring, there would be no special use permit essentially in effect on this property. And so we'd be looking at probably rewinding the wheel back to a single-family occupancy if this extension's not granted.
Um, and just as an aside, I mean, I don't see the point of, I would just go ahead and grant the year. You're sort of implying that, you know, or hoping that conditions can do what you think they're going to do, and they might not do. I don't, I just don't see the point of not going the whole year. That's just personal.
It was a pandemic. A lot of activities, or less, less activity this year than the normal year.
And I will say, as I mentioned in my introduction, the last time the Planning Commission considered a site plan and special use extension was 2015. This doesn't happen very often, and so I know sometimes even I, when we were first discussing this, I had to refresh my memory about all the mechanics of it and look back to 2015. And in that case, a one-year extension was issued. It's really no different than the initial approval, giving them 12 months. And certainly, if there's failure to act within the next 12 months, this will either expire or will be back before you in 12 months' time for another extension request, at which point you can all appraise it with fresh eyes if those conditions haven't been met. But I mean, from staff's perspective, to your point, Commissioner Daley, I don't see any reason to not just grant the year extension, and we'll hope that we can get this wrapped up as soon as possible.
Any other?
Bill made a motion?
I don't think.
Or is there a motion to be made?
Um, should we allow the applicant to speak first, Mr. Kane?
I think that would, that would be.
That's appropriate.
Yeah. Let's, let's let the applicant speak first, if you'd like to.
I haven't done this before, so I'm not sure what I'm doing.
Well, we can hear you, so you're doing better than most people.
Okay, I just want to say I would appreciate the time to finish the project. It was due mainly to COVID and being afraid to be around people, and I was sick myself. So if you just grant us an extension, we certainly would appreciate it.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. And does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Ms. Pelletier. Now we can open up discussion if someone wants to make a motion.
Move to grant a one-year extension of SUP 2002 and SPR 2002.
Aye.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kane, will you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Honig?
Aye.
Commissioner Irwin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kingsworthy?
Aye.
Commissioner Castrova?
Aye.
Commissioner Leish?
Aye.
Commissioner Orman?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. And next item on the agenda is discuss amendment to Table 154410A of the zoning ordinance and consider setting a public hearing on the issue at the March 4, 2021 meeting. Mr. Kane?
Madam Chair, staff received an inquiry over the last month regarding a possible project in our industrial district. This project would include a co-located or a sharing of a building with a fitness and health studio, as well as a dance studio. Our use table under the zoning ordinance classifies those two uses separately. So we have music, art, and dance studios as one use, and then fitness and health clubs fall within a category with other commercial-type amusements. Those commercial-type amusements, including fitness and health clubs, are currently permitted as a use by right in the SCI district, whereas fitness and dance studios are only permitted in the city's CD4 and CD5 zoning districts. You know, receiving this request and consideration of it, I just make a few points in regard to it. One, the city has historically allowed a variety of uses in our industrial district that were, for a variety of reasons, made sense to permit in the district. It might be that they were not necessarily industrial in nature, but maybe they had an unusually high amount of impact on adjacent properties. So for instance, like a dog kennel isn't necessarily an industrial use, but it's maybe something that's more befitting an industrial area as opposed to a traditional commercial corridor. At the same time, we've also allowed things that benefit from a large, open space and type format. So that's why the fitness uses are allowed in that district, because things like a CrossFit gym are often located in a big, open space. And so there's an opportunity for some reuse of existing industrial buildings, and also for buildings that would be built for these purposes, for those buildings to later be used for an industrial purpose. So there's, there's some kind of cross-pollination there in synergy that makes sense to permit. In staff's memorandum, I provided an overview of the non-industrial uses that are currently identified as permitted within the SCI zoning district. And you'll see there's a whole variety of uses, some of them automotive in nature, some of them sort of adjacent to more of a contract, contractor-type service. Some things that just, like I said, have maybe higher-than-average adverse impacts on their neighboring properties, and then some things that benefit from the large format of a building that you typically find in an industrial area. And so in light of that, And so in light of that, staff is recommending that you consider this text change. I provided a draft of it. As text changes go, this is a pretty simple one. We'd essentially just be adding a P to the land use table to indicate that it's permitted within the SDI district. And so tonight's action is just to get feedback, and then if there's comfort with taking this forward for public hearing, I would ask that you set that public hearing for your March 4 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Any questions for Mr. Kane? Any discussion?
I like a good idea.
Bye, Bill.
Just sounds like a good idea. I'm there. I think we should, is there a motion here? Do we, okay?
We're looking for a motion to set-
Set a public hearing.
Motion to set a public hearing on text change 21-02 at our March 4, 2021 regular meeting.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kane, will you take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Irwin? I'm sorry, Commissioner Honig?
Aye.
Commissioner Irwin?
Aye.
Commissioner Kingsworthy?
Aye.
Commissioner Kostova?
Aye.
Commissioner Leish?
Aye.
Commissioner Ortman?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
And Chair, motion passes nine to zero. Sorry, Commissioner Irwin, I've been on the verge of messing up that roll call all night, and it finally happens. Apologize for talking over you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. And next on the agenda is staff report. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff did want to report on two administrative approvals that were issued since our meeting last month. Staff issued a site plan approval for 501 East Pickard. This is a building that was purchased by ApCom, which is an electrical contractor. It's located on the northeast corner of Pickard and Fancher. And this would be to allow for a building addition to that existing building so that they can relocate their business, which is currently located just west of the railroad tracks on Pickard Street, next to Coin Oil as part of that site. So if you've been by there recently, you'll see there's been some initial demolition work and some building rehab, some painting and things that have taken place. That should be a really good project. Second one is at 1523 South Mission Street. This is the property that currently houses the McLaren Ready Care facility. Property owner came forward, there is some existing vacant space within that building on the east end of the building, and they have an interested tenant, which is a dialysis clinic. They would need that space plus some more space, so they're going to be adding some additional square footage to that building on the rear, as well as adding a generator and a few parking spaces at the rear. And that was approved just at the end of last month. So two, two good projects that we should start seeing some activity on very soon. For your meeting next month, we have one application already on file, which is a rezoning request. This is from United Apartments for a property located just north of the former malt shop at University of Bello Street. So there's two parcels there that there's a proposal for a rezoning to facilitate a redevelopment project. And we also have two marijuana grower applications pending, and so I'm anticipating those special use permit applications will be coming forward to the planning commission. If not in March, then probably in April or May. So our deadline for the March meeting is Monday, and we'll keep you posted on what comes forward. I do know, I intend next month to join you on work session to talk about the planning commission bylaws and rules of procedure. For those of you who were on the planning commission last year, you'll remember around this time last year, we established a subcommittee, which is composed of Commissioner Honig and Commissioner Leish, to look at those bylaws. They haven't been updated in over 10 years. Some inconsistencies with the ordinance and state law because of the passage of time. And so we'll have some recommended amendments to those bylaws and rules of procedure that we'll bring forward to work session so that we can bring them forward to a later meeting for adoption. So that's all I have. We do have two items on our work session docket for tonight. So at this point, unless there's questions for me, I would turn things over to you, Madam Chair, so that we can adjourn the work session.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Any questions for Mr. Kane? If someone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Move the way adjourn. Second.
Do we need a break between now and the work session, or?
No, no. We need a roll-
Okay. Well, let's start the work session then.
I'm going to take 10 seconds. I need to blow my nose. I apologize. Not in my best tonight.
Go for it.
Did we need a roll call vote to adjourn?
I actually don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so either.
Is there a way that instead of doing a roll call vote for everything, we could do like all the, all the, those in favor say aye, all those opposed say nay?
I'm pretty sure when they, when the state law was passed to allow this, that's why we have to do a roll call vote.
We won't have to do this when we're back in person. It's just an aspect of the electronic meeting format. So no one's more anxious than me to not have to go through roll calls all the time. So, and I do think you're correct on the not needing it for adjournment, especially tonight since we're moving into work session. But with that, the first item on your docket for work session tonight is the administrative review threshold. I won't belabor the entire memorandum, but I'll just note, in the middle of 2015, the planning commission reinstituted an administrative review process. It is an authority that existed under the zoning ordinance and adoption then, as well as the current zoning ordinance, which does allow the planning commission to delegate authority for site plan review to the secretary of the planning commission, to the city planner. And it's totally discretionary at the planning commission's discretion. Initially, that included only non-residential projects up to a certain threshold. In 2016, the planning commission at the time expanded that authority to all projects that were under 5,000 square feet of building area change or 25 parking spaces of change. So, you know, just to go back through some of the history of administrative review, there have been cases where we've had projects come in that it's an entirely new building that's under those thresholds. So for instance, the crematorium project that was approved a few months back in the Industrial Park South, that was a brand-new building, new parking on a vacant lot, that all fell within our threshold. We've also had additions to large projects, so the Hobby Lobby project, existing building, a large building, large parking area, but the magnitude of impact was within threshold. That also qualified for administrative review. Periodically, staff gets feedback from folks who are disappointed that their projects don't fall within administrative review, or hears from applicants that they're going to tailor their project in order to fall under the threshold for administrative review, which I think is counterproductive for the city's goals, which are primarily, from a development perspective, to encourage investment and to encourage expansion in tax space. And additional building square footage accomplishes that. And so I would also just say, we've been, we've now been doing this administrative review process for almost six years in this round. Prior to 2015, under previous staff, there were also administrative review authorities granted in the past. I think it's gone, it's really worked flawlessly, in part because we have a really amazing review team here at the city. You guys, the planning commission doesn't get to see that part of this process, for better or worse, but Stacy Tawari at Public Works, Randy Keeler at the Fire Department, and Brian Ketch at the Building Department are like three of the smartest, nicest-to-work with people I've ever worked with. They're all outstanding at their relevant expertises, and the four of us work really well together. And so for over six years now, we've been, we've been reviewing administrative site plans. We've never exceeded five business days in reviewing a project, which, when we set that goal upfront, I thought we might make it a year. I thought we might have a few hiccups. We've never passed that point with any project. So it works really good, and we get really good feedback from our customers when they use the process. It's not because they don't like the planning commission, but they do get intimidated. The process is intimidating for some people. I think there's also a perception that even, even though site plan review by code is not a discretionary process, as you all know, that getting to the planning commission kind of implies discretion. And so there's a fear that even though we tell them, if you meet the code, you meet the code, that they're going to get to the planning commission and get a denial. And then finally, it just helps us to be responsive in terms of time. So we've had projects come forward where someone said, you know, we're trying to move quick, we want to be open by this date, we want to, we got a contractor lined up, and rather than, you know, 30 to 60-day delay to get to the planning commission, we can get them usually out the door in one to two weeks and get them onto their building permit process. So I wanted to bring this forward tonight. We haven't, because we haven't had a conversation about administrative review in the entirety, really since 2016, just to kind of report back how it's working, and to see if there's any appetite among the planning commission to consider expanding that delegation to include more or all of the site plan review applications that come forward to the city, just so we can continue to provide good customer service to our developers and property owners. So that's why it's on the docket tonight, and I'd just be interested in any feedback the planning commission has. If you are interested in modifying the threshold, staff would bring forward a resolution to your meeting next month or in the future, which would reflect that change in delegated authority so that you could adopt that resolution. And obviously, you could have additional discussion before doing so at that future meeting.
Well, I'm for whatever will keep us from having to rubber stamp things unless it's required.
I tend to agree too. I think that, I think for the most part, it's good to expedite things. However, I, I guess the one caveat that I would like to bring forward is, I have personally had four, up to four different people, not, I have had more than four people come to me as a planning commissioner and say that they couldn't get the project that they wanted to get through. And so I guess the only thing I would, I would say was, it would be really nice to have, if you're doing these review meetings, to have the rejections as well as the ones that you pass, because then if there really is an issue that we need to address as a planning commission, it comes to us case by case, but we can kind of see like, hey, this is, because what happens is you're hearing it from our customers, but we don't hear up until, until you've had three or four cases, and then it's an issue. So I'm thinking it might be nice if we know, you know, you know, and I guess we don't need the full, all of the details, but like a list of, here's the three reviews this team did this week, we rejected two, and it's not, you're probably not rejecting them, you're probably telling them, here's what you're going to need to do to get it passed, but to them, that's a rejection. And so it would be nice to have, you know, these two were, were turned down and this one was accepted, because you're telling us about the accepted ones, but we don't know is all the times that people can't get something through. And those are actually the ones that, as a planning commission, that we need to address is, here is our code, is it, is it doing what we want to do, or is it preventing businesses? Is it preventing residents from being able to, you know, put their driveway and make it, you know, I want to, I want a driveway that's three cars wide. And that was, that's not in our code. But if 12 people are saying they want it, maybe we need to consider, why is it that we want this? So that's all I would say is, if we could somehow, in what we give you permission to approve, we also get more information about, these were the 12 meetings, here's a brief synopsis of the outcome. And I don't want like a 12-page document, but just like, yea, nay, you know, contingent, something like that.
Yeah, I would, I just want to clear, confirm what you said, which is, in the time I've worked at the city, which is now where I'm in my seventh year, the planning commission has, and staff have denied a total of zero applications. So there, there aren't any secret denials happening. I would be required to report a denial to you because it's an application for administrative review, so denials aren't happening. It's a little challenging for me to share, I think, what you're looking for. I'd be curious to know more details about who's spoken to you about being told they couldn't do a project, because that's actually very rare. We have a lot of communication with the public every day, and sometimes it's just a call. We don't even, maybe don't even know who's calling, and they might just ask us, does this district allow X? It could just be that they want to know, they could be a lender or an appraiser, or they could be an interested business owner, we don't always know. And sometimes we do tell people, no. If, you know, I want to put a marijuana grower in a building on Mission Street, we would tell them, no, because that's not a use that's allowed in that district. And I think more to your point, we have a lot of meetings where we just, the point of our pre-application process, which our development team holds meetings for, is to give people information so that their applications are as close to code compliance as possible so that we can get them through our process faster, and get them to construction faster. And sometimes we have a lot of feedback, and people are fine with that, and sometimes we just tell people one thing, and we might not even know that they're unhappy about it, they just go about their way. They might tell you, they don't tell us. So it's not always possible. Lots of good projects don't happen, even when we've told people they can do them. And so it's always a bit of a mixed bag. I mean, we see a lot of ideas, and we tell a lot of people, yes, and a lot of those things still don't happen, because there's just a lot of factors at play. There's also a lot of folks who come forward at the pre-application level, want some level of confidentiality, and so it's difficult. They're, they're kind of coming forward and saying, I'm not comfortable even letting you know what this project is. I just want to talk it, I don't want to tell you which property, I'm just going to describe it in general terms, to which I usually say, well, understand that my feedback then is going to be general. I can't guarantee it applies to the property in question, because I'm not able to look it up, and every property has its own foibles. But I can commit to, I think what might make sense, Commissioner Rice, if you think this would get to your point, is maybe at a routine work session, once or twice a year, I can report out on the substance of those meetings, and if there's been any recurrent issues that have come up. And I would ask that you all do the same. If you're hearing things from the public, I specifically don't know what issues you're talking about, and if you know about them and I don't, I can't do anything about them. So if that, if that person wants them resolved, they either need to let me know it's a problem, or I need you to let me know. Otherwise, I won't know.
And with the administrative review process, no one's required to go through the process, right? If they really wanted to go in front of the planning commission instead, they could.
Yeah, absolutely. I, we, we offer it as a, as a benefit really to, it's a lower fee, it's a faster review and approval process. I don't think I've ever had anybody refuse it. I've also, in practice, we've, staff has reserved the right to bring things forward to the planning commission, even if they otherwise would qualify for administrative review, and we have done that, I think, maybe two to three times over the last six years. So that's something we do on the regular, but there have been cases where just maybe a project, I feel like a project needs the airing out in public so that people know it's coming. Or maybe an applicant has a track record of not following through on their site plan approvals. And so I think that it has maybe, an approval from the planning commission comes a little bit more authority sometimes than from staff. Gives you guys a chance to ask the hard questions of the applicant that maybe staff has asked, that maybe the applicant needs to hear again. So I would continue to have that available, and as you said, if someone wants to come to the planning commission, staff's intent is not to stop them from doing that.
To that point too, Jacob, it also gives the public a chance to speak at that, even if it's going to be, they meet everything and it's, it's going to be rubber stamped anyway, at least we get some feedback from the public if it's something that, generally that area of the city or whatever doesn't like, at least we get that, that feedback.
Sure. And it would, by necessity, have to come before the item was on the agenda, since those aren't public hearing cases.
Like rentals, they want us to stop rentals. That's not even in our purview. That's not even in our purview.
And, and there's, the, the code doesn't permit you to delegate this discretion for special uses. So, you know, that's an area where, to your point, Commissioner Friedrich, if, if there's sensitivity around a particular use or in a particular area, that's something that can be tackled through a text or map amendment to address so that, kind of to better tailor what is going into the administrative review process. But overall, like I said, we're, we're now at, I forget the total, thirty-nine cases that we've reviewed administratively over the past six years. I've been pleasantly surprised that in that time, I don't recall ever being approached by a planning commissioner to say, what happened there? How did that get approved? What happened, you know, I need more information. I'm concerned. Perhaps you've had concerns and you haven't, you haven't shared them. But I, I thought that maybe that indicated the process was working well. So I just wanted to bring it forward for consideration. Certainly, if there's a different threshold or if keeping things status quo, or if revoking that authority is, those are all within the planning commission's options. I just wanted to bring it forward for conversation. So I'd be interested to know if there's not further questions or comments, if, what the kind of temperature is on this issue so that I can prepare an appropriate resolution if that is in fact what I should do for your March meeting to bring this forward again in the regular meeting.
Well, I don't, I don't care if you want to move the needle some.
And even at the current level we have right now, I don't feel like we're overworked. But I'd agree with Bill, if you want to move the needle some, I'm good with that.
I appreciate, I appreciate the process, the way it's worked so far. You've taken thirty-nine probably small stamped things away from us and left us with the, from my point of view, a very reasonable workload. I'm happy with the way it is.
I think it's pretty rare at this point that we see a site plan review that isn't connected to a special use permit application. So I'm not sure if moving the needle will make a huge difference.
That's a good, that's a good comment. I, I'm not sure either. There's a handful of cases that stick out in my mind that would have, it could have qualified for administrative approval. The Mitsuba expansion a few years ago was a project that was over the threshold square footage wise, but in the scope of the, the overall site. It's funny, you know, like if you put two thousand square feet onto the side of a gas station, that looks like a major addition. If you put eight thousand square foot onto a hundred thousand square foot manufacturing facility, it looks like a shed. I mean, it doesn't look like much. And so that was an instance where that project, it probably would have been helpful for the, the property owner to have an expedited review. I think they would have appreciated it. I don't think that the outcome would have been different in any meaningful way. And they were just a couple thousand square feet over that threshold. But to your point, I, I agree, Madam Chair. I don't think that if we'd have had no threshold for the last six years, I don't think we would have like two hundred cases on this list. We'd probably be talking about forty-five to fifty administrative site plan reviews as opposed to thirty-nine. So not a major change in your workload, not a major change on the staff workload. But it does just give us more flexibility in, in getting somebody to a yes faster. So.
Jacob, with the, do you suspect that the Meyer remodeling project would have been different had we moved the needle before?
That was an interesting one. So that, at the time, our code had a sidewalk waiver process. And so initially, there was some conversation about bringing it forward for that reason. I don't recall exactly why they, how did that go? They, they went through administrative review and bypassed the waiver. That's what happened. That did get an administrative approval. It had to go to the ZBA, that's why you saw it, because there was a parking variance that was required. But yeah, I had, that was actually an instance where I was trying to encourage them to come to the planning commission, because I said, I thought there was a case for their sidewalk waiver. At least it would give them a chance to air that case. And instead, they, they wanted the expedited approval. So they ended up coming, going through the administrative review process because they did qualify.
And they wouldn't even need a parking waiver now, right? That.
Yes, yeah, they would not need a variance. So yeah, they, they and the, Central, not Central Commons, yeah, Central Commons, the Keymart Hobby Lobby Plaza, they also had to get a parking variance and they were eligible for administrative review. So they, they reduced their meeting load by one. But in both cases, those wouldn't require a variance for that reason. Okay, well, what I will do, since I'm not sure that I have the clearest feedback ever, but I don't want to belabor the point, I'm going to bring a resolution forward that has a couple of options in it. And I'll let you guys debate it a bit in March and then you can decide how to move forward from there. But I'll at least bring something forward for consideration, if that works for everybody.
Sure.
Perfect. All right. Our next item is housekeeping amendments. So typically every year, the planning commission will take a opportunity at the beginning of the year, talking about the work plan, to look at any housekeeping amendments that might be desired over the next year. In my memo, I just provided a quick overview of what you all have done so far, which is you've approved eleven text amendments, or I should say you've recommended forward eleven text amendments to the city commission, the three map amendments. All of those were ultimately adopted by the city commission. That does not include the text amendment that you moved forward tonight or the one that you set the public hearing on tonight. Looking at the, the work plan, I went back, in 2019, the chair and vice chair were delegated as a, or set up as a subcommittee to identify and prioritize housekeeping amendments. And we got through a number of those and the eleven text amendments I referenced, we still had some items left on the list. And then on the staff side, I just keep a running list of issues that either I've identified, that I hear about from other staff, or that, you know, tripping hazards that we've encountered with projects that either have come forward or that haven't come forward. And so I, I keep a list. I wanted to bring that list forward tonight. It's a pretty long list, so I apologize. I could understand if the reaction to this list is like, geez, this is a lot of stuff. But I will say, these issues vary in complexity. Some of these things are just like, talk about whether or not to move permitted to a special use or, or vice versa. I think that it's within staff's capacity this year to tackle as many of these as you're interested in. And certainly, if you have other things you want to add on the list instead, we could talk about that tonight. But I'm just kind of curious to get a general sense, are there any of these items you'd like to learn more about? Anything you'd like me to bring back in a future work session for discussion? Or even anything that you're like, yeah, bring that forward for introduction at a regular meeting, because that's something we're really interested in? One final note is just on the basis of our conversation on our first public hearing tonight, I made a note to myself about native landscaping. If there's an interest in those type of items, that's the type of thing we could discuss in the evening, even if it's just a language of encouragement within our zoning ordinance about native plannings. We certainly could adopt a text amendment that was, that included language on that topic. And that's, Commissioner Kingsworthy, just an example of how to make that concern or question actionable. So in addition to bringing it forward as a, as a potential condition of approval on a particular project, if it's something that you have a global interest in for any similar projects in the city, it might be worth having a broader discussion about implementing it through the code. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn things over and let you guys do some talking so I can rest my voice before I lose it.
Okay, um, any thoughts, anybody?
Well, it would be helpful if this list could be divided between the greens, yellows, and the reds, as in reds being the most complicated or hardest. Personally, missing middle strikes me as something that I would like to look at, as is the case with green infrastructure.
I, I second those options. I think we, in that whole planning process, we really focus on that missing middle as part of what we really wanted to focus on. I think that'd be great to get a head start on that. And, and we've had a couple of special use permits related to the green infrastructure. I think that would be good to look at.
Yeah, those are the two I was interested in too. Same here.
Where are my contrarians?
I'm, I'm trying, I'm muted. So I do think the home occupation standards fall into that missing middle because I think some of our, our occupation standards are actually what is holding us back from having missing middle housing.
Yeah, I'd like to do taxidermy in my house, if that's okay.
I'm pretty sure that's on the prohibited list, but I'd have to look.
Corey, do you have a, an animal right there in your house that you might? I'm, I'm just one, I just, nevermind, I withdraw the question.
The poor cat.
Don't hurt puss and boots.
The cat would have revenge, I'm sure.
I would say that, that this, the concept of native plannings, I know it's, it's not as easy as it seems, but if we would consider incentives to encourage creation of green infrastructure projects or no, or, or inclusions, maybe we, maybe that's something we could consider with the native plannings as well.
I have a note here that that's where that goes.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, this, I think we could very easily include a conversation around native plants in that green infrastructure conversation.
Terrific.
It's a good fit with that.
And on here, Jacob, you have the floating overlay district. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Or, because right off the top of my head, that's something I'm not interested in, having you had the floating overlays or overlays before.
Yeah, so that's just really coming from, we do periodically get inquiries about uses that are pretty incompatible with a form-based set of standards. And so the idea there, when we, I'm going to back way up and I'm going to try to make this brief. When we started the conversation about having a new zoning ordinance back in 2015, one of the things that, that we heard pretty routinely was that the mission overlay was getting some good outcomes, but the incentive structure was, was backwards. So we were making the, the thing we didn't want was really easy to do. You could come in, you could build a building really far back from the road, it could be a really small building surrounded by a giant parking lot. That was all by right. Like you could just walk in and do that. If you wanted to do mixed use, higher, you know, taller building, less parking, all of that required, all these waivers, all this process, it was really uncertain. You know, you were, you had out of town developers who were going, well, I don't know your planning commission, are they going to, if, if, you know, if one commissioner, if Commissioner Friedrich is like, no, you have to have seventy-eight parking spots, not seventy-seven, and it kills the project, and I've got hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in, in the due diligence, like, people aren't going to do that. So the, the idea here was this would kind of flip those incentives so that rather than right now, we, we flip the incentive, but we don't have that kind of pressure release. So this would give the planning commission the ability to say, okay, developer, you want to do something a little different. It doesn't really meet our form-based code, but with some, you could maybe meet the intents of the form-based code in different ways than the code specifically requires. And you guys could kind of extract those compromises on a case-by-case basis. So it's not the easy path. It's not like you just run right through. There'd be some uncertainty, there'd be negotiation, and it would still keep the form-based code, the, the vision, the easy thing. But it would give that other option. So there's just a few instances where, like the form-based code works really well, I, you know, I think in like eighty to ninety percent of instances. And I think a lot of folks I've worked with who are initially hesitant or skeptical about the code, after we walk through their project, they feel a lot better about it. But there's still those ten to twenty percent of projects where somebody's just like, nope. Like, only thing I do is I'm going to build my car wash and it's going to be a hundred feet back from the road, surrounded by parking. And this just would give them a pathway. Doesn't mean the planning commission has to greenlight it, but it would maybe give us some standards to say, okay, we can relax things in these particular instances when it might make sense to do so, to meet, you know, if we're meeting the intents and the, going in the right direction overall with the project and we're not necessarily explicitly meeting every standard to the T, it just gives that outlet. So that was the idea. But certainly, like, I brought, if all of these are just for your discussion, I think there's, there's some merit in everything and there's probably some downside with all of these, whether it's added complexity to the review process or, you know, somebody's not going to like it somewhere. But I thought it was worth bringing it forward for conversation because it is something I hear and it's something that I observe just in applying the code.
Jacob, how much work would a, a, a look at special regulated use list be? That doesn't sound like a huge project.
No, and you'll remember, we, we briefly talked about that in work session a couple years ago. And when we had the fortune teller, especially his permanent project come forward, I'm pretty sure, I, I can't recall who, but I think one or two commissioners, Commissioner Rice is owning up to it, kind of indicated some skepticism about why that use was classified in that way. When we did the form-based, when we did the new code, that list did get some minor adjustment, but it wasn't the main focus of the project. And so I just thought that might be worth another gander, just to see if there's anything else that could be shifted. To the extent that we can move things from special regulated use to special use and from special use to permitted use, if there are things we're comfortable with, it's, it's a good practice to do that. It just makes, it makes your lives easier, it makes the property owner or business owners' life easier. And if we're not protecting a vital community interest through that regulation, that it, might deserve a fresh look. So I think it'd be simple. It could be probably ten minutes of a work session.
Right.
Yeah, taxi dance halls could, could be making a comeback, so.
Those, those came out. I almost, I wanted to keep them in for sentimental reasons, but we ended up, they got removed with the update.
And what, I think it's fairly involved, this incentives for the conversion of non-conforming, non-conforming residential units. I mean, I'm interested in that, but how big is that?
Well, you know, I think that would be a medium in complexity, but probably high in controversy. It's maybe, it's a more sensitive topic, but I think in practice, there's only so many tools we have available to utilize. And so it'd really just be a conversation about what tools will the planning commission see as being a good fit and in what areas, and then kind of just vetting that out. That, that topic really comes from, from two places. One, when we, when we adopted the new code, the non-conforming property section got a lot of attention, even though it really didn't change in any meaningful way. It was like, for some folks, it was the first time they, they looked at it. And so it felt like new regulation. It's also been, it was in the previous master plan, there was some conversation about the properties located north of High Street. There's several properties along Washington Main and University that are non-conforming, and they've been non-conforming residential uses for going on thirty-six years now. And, you know, for thirty-six years, you could kind of keep patching things together, but there might be some benefit, especially in the current enrollment environment, there might be some benefit in revisiting that and seeing if we can't get property owners to, you know, converting a ten-person occupancy rooming dwelling to three, three-person units is probably a win for the city and for the neighbors because it's, it might be this, close to the same number of people, but it's going to be less of a nuisance, I think. And so there may be some opportunities there. And, you know, that's just for example, to give people some choice there, to get a better improvement, to get a better property, and to keep some investment happening in those areas. For whatever reason, that's an idea that's been kicking around since well before my time, and it's never gotten any traction to actually come to fruition. But I, I've always just kind of kept it on the list because I think it is something that's, that's worthy of reflecting on from time to time and seeing if it is a good time to tackle it.
Yeah, and there's three that kind of go together, so maybe that could be one work session. Explicit standards for modification to existing sites. Explicit standards for modification to existing sites. Incentives for the conversion of non-conforming residential units. An increased opportunity for improvement of non-conforming properties. I think all three of those are one topic.
Okay, sure.
Did I give you enough to work on?
I would, I just ask, kind of on the flip side, is there anything on this list that you guys don't want ever see again? Like, please don't bring this forward?
No.
Okay. From time to time, and I only ask that because occasionally, just by virtue of, I don't have the luxury of always controlling my workflow, so if we get, you know, five specialty use permit applications in one month, we're gonna be busy, I know you guys are gonna be busy. So I try to keep that agenda balanced. But if a month happens to come by where we have a very light agenda, and I can tackle a smaller item on the list in work session, I may try to do that just to keep moving things forward. So I just wanted to make sure, if there's anything on here that you're just like, no, please don't, I won't spend the time.
We don't have development parcels anymore, do we?
A development parcel plan, it's Article 5 of the code. It's a process for large sites, for the...
The state home property would probably be...
There's a handful of them around town. It's more than, it's more than just the state home, but that would be the largest in the city. Alright, well, I will, I think what I will do is I will start working on a couple of these, and I will maybe bring back a refined list to one of our next work sessions, just to kind of reprioritize and schedule some things out, and see if anybody has any additional thought or input on that, and then we'll just keep moving it forward through the year. And knowing there's gonna be spillover into 2022, for sure, especially with things moving into public hearing, but we'll at least start chipping away.
I, thank you. But is there any interest in talking about the state home property as a planning commission? Think it is, as it is our biggest undeveloped piece of land? Or are we just gonna wait until something comes before us, and then...
I think we need to, I think what we need is a developer that's interested in doing something with it.
We have a couple of procedural items that are being resolved in terms of the archaeological study of the site, in particular, that I think it would be beneficial for the resolution of those items before we start a more detailed conversation, because that could impact the vision for the property pretty significantly, depending on what areas of the property would be available for development. That's why we're not, the city's not actively marketing the property at the moment, because that work really needs to take place first, per the city's agreement with the San Shippur Indian Tribe. So I would agree that that should be on our list, I just don't think that'll be 2021. But that should definitely be an item that comes forward to the planning commission, to your point, Commissioner Rice, before marketing begins.
I mean, just the whole idea, if it's commercial, residential, you know, that's what...
If we don't know how much is usable, though, it's hard to determine that, though.
Right, but we still kind of may have a vision of what we don't want it to be, or what, you know.
Nothing will be, because the property is currently zoned agricultural, and a minimal rezoning application is gonna have to come before the planning commission, before anything not agricultural can happen on that site. And there'd be significantly more public process required before that as well, to dispense with the property. We did, if anyone's interested, back in 2015 or early '16, we did have a visioning workshop about the Mount Pleasant Center, which I know some of you participated in, that were on the planning commission at that time. And there is a report, it kind of gets to some of the items you address, Commissioner Rice, in terms of, kind of on the big picture, what are we interested in here, and what aren't we interested in here? It kind of identified those bookends for the property. We've discussed internally, even, I mean, immediately in the aftermath of that workshop, it was understood that was step one in that visioning process. We weren't gonna, that wasn't gonna be actionable feedback, that was just to kind of start to narrow the focus of future feedback sessions. So in any event, yes, it's important, yeah, I'm anxious to do that as well. And trust me, when the opportunity is right, we will certainly be having probably work sessions, unfortunately, to talk about that project, because there'll be a lot to sort out.
Well, if we're done with discussion, I guess we can...
Pired.
I appreciate everybody's feedback tonight, and I guess everybody, my mic is already home, so be safe at home. If you are traveling tonight, it doesn't look too great out, so be careful.
Good night.
Alright, goodnight, everybody.
Done, okay, very good. Goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight.